Study session of Independent School District 535 School Board is called to order at 5:01 PM, Tuesday, July 20th in room 137 of the Edison Building. The Board acknowledges this site and all our PS sites are situated on the ancestral land of the Dakota people, and we honor the Dakota nations and the sacred land of all indigenous peoples. Interested members of the public are welcome and encouraged to view this meeting remotely at youtube.com/ISD535. Where the livestream up. Thank you. Present at the school meeting are School Board Members Superintendent Ken Pecel, a non-voting ex-official member, and Assistant School Board Clerk Ms. Michelle Severson. Ms. Severson, will you please call the roll?
Thank you. Kirk Dumson.
Here.
Director Barnum.
Here.
Director Garcia.
Here.
Director McLaughlin.
Here.
Chair Marvin.
Here.
Vice Chair Nathan.
Here.
Treasurer Workman.
Here.
Thank you. At this time, we have the opportunity to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, in the resolve with liberty and justice for all.
2.01, approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda? Steering, none?
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Agenda is approved. 8.01, strategic plan, continuous improvement. This is a study session, and Superintendent Pecel will facilitate. Superintendent Pecel.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, everybody. This is a fantastic attendance on the part of both the Board and the Cabinet. I just want to say, I mentioned to, I think, to Jean at the last Board meeting, in the previous organization where I was president, the president actually has a vote on the Board. And so, our whole first Board meeting, I had to keep stopping myself from voting with you. If I ever do that, I'm not getting, trying to give myself a raise. It was just like, it was like a muscle tick. I kept thinking to say aye, so. I'm really excited about this opportunity, and as I talked with the Chair and Vice Chair in our Executive Committee meeting, one of the questions that I've gotten, as I've been here now all of three weeks, is what are your early conclusions? And I think the single biggest early conclusion I have is that, and it's a hypothesis that some of you may or may not agree with, is that Rochester Public Schools needs but is also very, very ready for clearer, long-term direction on the way we can serve the students of this community. The groundwork in this district, the people in this district, the community support is just extraordinary. And what's the long-term strategy? As an interim superintendent, that immediately raises questions for me about how we respond to that possibility. And so, tonight's working session is really devoted to grappling with this question. Should you, on the Board, and those of us in the Cabinet, and I will be helping you think about this tonight, should you launch an effort to develop a full strategic plan during the 2021-2022 school year? And I say "full" because we do have a plan which we copied for you that is there and was developed through some pretty extensive conversation that predates me, but that plan doesn't take us to, at least in my view, the layers of strategy and specificity that we'll need to really achieve the full potential of the district. If we did this, and I'll give you some ideas later in our agenda, it would be an efficient but robust effort that we would really need to put some work into. And so, that's why we agreed that tonight, the question is not how, it's whether. Whether the Board would take formal action on this or not is a question for you to be thinking about. Obviously, we wouldn't do that tonight in a study session, but my recommendation is that the Board certainly, and that's why I'm grateful for this being on the agenda tonight, should really give serious thought to this possibility that we'll be thinking about, and in particular, to how the Board should participate in that development, and I'll share some thoughts on that as well. So, that's the question I'm hoping by the time we leave, each of you as Board Members will have a personal, at least, answer or beginning of an answer to. As my colleagues now in the Cabinet know, I like to, not always, but sometimes, do kind of a check-in question, and I try and tie it to the subject matter. And I think this is also a chance for us not only to begin focusing on the subject that we're here to talk about tonight, but also just to begin to build relationships with each other and to get to know each other. So, I'm going to flash the question up, and one of the things that I, especially in a group of this size, really try and avoid is going around geographically, because then, like, it's been 25 minutes, and then Jean is going to finally share after everyone's been around. So, the way we'll do this is, I'll just, we'll do sort of popcorn. I'll invite anybody to jump in and share your answer to the question, and if you don't want to do that, of course, there's no mandate. You don't have to, but I hope you will. So, here's our check-in question, which does tie, I think, to our subject. When was a time that you felt you were part of something larger than yourself in your personal or professional life? It can be any way you want to define that sense that I'm a part of something bigger. So, just to give you all a chance to start, to think a little bit, I'll start, and then I'll invite somebody else to jump in. And I think we can take a bit of time on this, because as I said, it's related to our subject. I think that we want to make sure that the young people, the educators, the staff, the parents in Rochester Public Schools do feel that they're a part of something larger than themselves, in a sense. For me, the example, because I'm thinking a lot about the future of this school district, goes back to the last time I worked in a school district. I worked for a Superintendent Patricia Harvey in St. Paul Schools for six years, and I'll just tell you, the first three years were rocky. She came from Chicago. She had a lot of change ideas. Her School Board Chair got defeated over some of them, but that would never happen in Rochester. But, by year four and five, we really had ironed out a lot of the disconnects, and at the heart of Pat's life mission was that young people, growing up in historically marginalized communities, can achieve at the highest levels. And when, when we were in years four and five and six, that was happening, it was happening in the data, but more than that, it was happening, people felt it. And so, if you had told me in year six that we would be there in year two, I never would have, I would have been skeptical. But we got there over time. And so, now, when I see people around the state who worked in St. Paul Schools at that time under Pat Harvey, all of us think of it as kind of like a powerful moment in our careers, and we weren't as clear about it at the time. She just, she just passed away a number of months ago, so I've been thinking about her as well. So, that's mine. Who's willing to jump in? Time in your life, personal or professional. Thank you.
That's such an easy question for me. As a musician who's played in orchestras for many, many, many years, and also conducting high school orchestras, that's when magic happened. And I think in a lot of ways, it was more powerful when it happened with my students, because it was almost possible that you could feel, I was worried about who was on the same page. And then there was this wonderful sense of accomplishment that kind of happened.
That wasn't every day in rehearsal, but generally, everybody's working for that goal, and everybody's making individual improvement, but it's for, it's for the performance, it's for the good of the whole group, so.
Yeah. Thank you. That's a great one.
Hey, I'll go next.
Thank you.
For me, the time is right now. So, just thinking about your example, working about the orchestra. I think for a long time, people in Rochester have been doing great things for a good cause, but to hear that music being played, right, it's going to take everyone. It's going to take everyone in all of our different spaces, doing what we're supposed to do. Facing the music, reading the music together, playing together, taking turns. If we do all of that together, I think the time is right now for us to hear that beautiful sound from the orchestra. So, for me, the part that's bigger than life is right now. I think Rochester's ready. I think we've been ready, and it's right now. The time is now.
Thank you. Don't be shy.
I stole my answer. This certainly is something that I, being on this Board, makes me definitely feel something larger than myself, but to give, I guess, to not copy your answer, I guess I'll switch to maybe another example that's poignant, is a number of years ago, I worked for an organization where we put on a camp for children all over the world who have lost someone to acts of terrorism. And so, to be able to see different kids come together around something so horrific and traumatic, but to be able to leave that with, what we gave to them essentially was a dignity curriculum, and how to maintain their dignity and the dignity of others when you're trying to work across, you know, borders either within your own state or county, across countries, and to be able to see now some of those students and a lot of their chaperones doing the things that they do today is just phenomenal. So, we have kids from Macedonia and Palestine, Afghanistan, Kenya. I mean, it's phenomenal, and I think, thinking of that moment and being able to apply that here, too, there's so much happening right now in our district and in the country that I feel like it's of that same, it's that same level. It's that same intensity, and I think that if we kind of capitalize on the right now, we're going to see some pretty amazing changes, and I think we are ready for that. I mean, the kids are showing us that we're ready. We're really the ones holding back.
I think all of us who are involved in education have 100 stories, 100. I mean, this is such a gift to be in a place where you recognize immediately, it's not about us, it's about everybody else. And I do remember one time when I was a beginning teacher, a young man at the school I was teaching whose family had all been murdered, this was during the war in Southeast Asia, was a refugee. He came over as an orphan, a high school-aged kid, and was brilliant, and, but he had a story that he wanted to tell about what had happened to his family and whole pot and the atrocities that he'd witnessed. His spoken English was wonderful, his written English was not so much, but he needed to write his story, and because I happened to be there and was an English teacher, he asked me if I'd help him. So, after school, we'd sit, and he would talk, and I would write. And it was one of the most horrific stories I've ever heard, one of the most important ones, but ultimately, his story got published in a book called Children of the Killing Fields, which was never a bestseller, but it's out there, and his story is going to live forever, long past the time that his family did. So, that was just one of the honors of my life, and it mattered so much to him, and it ended up mattering so much to me.
Well, I'd like to share a story regarding my professional life as a member of the Anchorage Fire Department. I was blessed to enjoy success at a relatively young age in terms of rank attainment, and also was made aware of a International Association of Black Professional Firefighters. And I attended my first convention, National Convention, and there I met firefighters from across the nation, some of whom were in their 60s and were still in entry-level positions, Boston Fire Department. And here I was, a command officer, battalion chief, in my mid-30s, and, but more than just the differences associated with rank, that was really the first time I actually felt accepted as a fire service professional, even though I had been with Anchorage Fire Department at that time some 15 years and would continue for another 12. And so, that has helped me to not understand the plight, because I've lived the plight, not only in terms of my professional career, but just life itself, where being among five students of color in my high school graduating class, which, again, was not unique in that came from a military family, and oftentimes, the bases we were assigned, we were just, the military had a strategic deployment pattern where you didn't try to have a lot of black people at the same base at the same time. So, just, you know, it just, those are things that have helped me become the person I am and the person I continue to strive to be as a parent of adult children and a grandparent of 18, soon-to-be 19 grandchildren.
Thank you for sharing that. I'm tired just hearing that.
Yeah.
Well, I can talk, oops. Go ahead.
No, that wasn't me.
Maybe I just meant that. I'll kind of jump on your story, I guess, Dawn, about children. So, this period of time has been really a rough time for me as a parent of two adopted children from different countries that both are going through some experiences that have challenged them but really challenged me, on the side of just really experiencing some, you know, pretty horrific racism, but also then trying to deal with growing up whitewashed. So, it's just, it's really affecting me, and it still does, but they have both made it clear, like, you have to do something. You guys have to do something, so.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I can go next. I'll blend two experiences I've had in Rochester, and I'm trying to place the timing, probably 2016, 2017. I got involved with some different groups in town that were focused on immigration rights, and to my surprise, I stood up in front of probably 100 and 150 people to talk about immigration rights on behalf of the ACLU, which is not something I ever expected I would do, but I did it, and that showed me that there were things that I could do that I didn't expect I could. It then led to a more behind-the-scenes role in a really fun event that was sponsored by a group called Families Belong Together, related to what was going on at our border at the time, and breaking families apart, and helping coordinate behind the scenes this wonderful summer evening event at one of our local parks with all kinds of people that spoke, who probably didn't even know each other, but we were all brought together there. It was pretty cool.
I'm going to build on Karen's theme. Something that I've been involved with in Rochester is a workshop for parents through the local area council, PTA. When we first started, one of our first groups was with Rochester Family Literacy, and with parents who were new to the country, and we had lots to tell them that we thought was going to be very helpful, but it was their stories about where they had come from, all they had gone through to get here, how much they wanted their children to succeed, how much they wanted to be part of this country, and how much they wanted to learn. And it's been really, really great seeing some of them grow into having positions in the district. Some of them took jobs in the district, and some of them took leadership roles in local PTAs. And they, they did more for me to tune me in now to the immigrant experience in Rochester that I don't think I would have gotten anywhere else, and I see it everywhere now, and it's become an important issue, you know, to me on the Board, too. So, I'm so, I'm so thrilled to be in a town where that opportunity is available, that diversity is available, and that we have the chance here to work on their behalf and on the behalf of everyone who may not be from here originally and is looking for a way to succeed.
I'll connect to that one, then, if we're linking. I always feel like I'm part of something bigger than myself, whether it's parenting or at work, but Hawthorne, every time I walk into Hawthorne Adult Learning, and you think about that we're one little piece of this puzzle, but they have, like you said, gone through so much to get where they are today and have such dreams, and, you know, the things that we can do to just clear the path, or to connect them with someone, or to provide a little bit of information they didn't have before, that's bigger than ourselves.
I'd love to just share that. I was raised in a household that concealed that it was never known. My mother came from another country. My father was a farmer from Southern Minnesota. I was born in a faraway land called Rochester, Minnesota, and lived in a town of 600, is the only brown person, and it was made of bronze steel. So, all of these coincidences kept coming into my life, and I, I understood at a very young age that my journey on this planet was finite, but I had choices that I could make along the journey, to bring people together or to separate them. And I received separation, right, from, from a lot of the people who entered into my journey, and I received a lot of collaboration from people who entered in my journey, and from, from witnessing my grandchildren, right, and seeing my mother's spark, or my father's belly laugh, and, and seeing the souls of people and their eyes when they, when they're truthful with you, when they, when they care. And education has been the format that has supported my family's growth through all of these years. I have more education than my mother or father or their ancestors ever had, and my children have more education than we have. And I'm starting to find out that my five- and six- and seven-year-old grandchildren are smarter than me now. So, so I'm a strong believer in public education and, and growing wherever you're planted. And so, the time is always now, and if not you, then who, right? So, let's do this. Let's do this together.
Who else choosing to? Nobody's forced to? My teacher wait time skills are still strong, but they're not awkward, so we won't. Well, thank you for those of you who jumped in with that. Every time I have a chance to listen to some of you, I get more excited about, you know, being here and what's possible. So, let me turn us to some of our content here. There are not many, when, when we start to look at research and data, I may have many, many slide decks to show, and some people may run screaming from the room. There's not many tonight. I wanted to just start out with a few of my sort of go-to insights about the promise and the peril of strategic planning, or planning in general. In some ways, one of my favorites is if everything's important, nothing is. And that's an old cliche, but it is, I think, deeply true in school districts that are ambitious for kids, where we say we have to do everything, and if we have to try and do everything, we just cannot do anything well. Also, good old Lewis Carroll, if you don't know where you're going, any road will get you there, raising the peril of confusing hard work with always being the right work, and so, really needing to have that clear destination, such that these hours that many of us are putting in are well-spent on behalf of kids. And then, another one, in preparing for battle, I've always found that plans are useless, but planning is indispensable. General Eisenhower. I think the key insight there is, we've all probably been a part of plans that didn't exactly pan out like we imagined they would, but if the planning process was done well, it identified your gaps, your opportunities, your possibilities going forward. So, just a few quick glimpses there. I think a really important point to begin this discussion is, there is groundwork that is laid, rich groundwork to build upon, in this work in Rochester, and all of you have a copy there of that one pager that we've called the Strategic Plan. But just to kind of illustrate why I think there is a need for greater definition and precision, oh yeah, thank you, we have them over here, just, you can, you can pass us out. I think many of you know this one, but if I just take our student achievement goal in the strategic plan, and let me just quickly read it to you, "Provide teaching and learning environments that engage and empower students to be critical thinkers, ethical contributors, skilled communicators, effective collaborators, resilient learners, and success-ready individuals." If you pull that apart, and it's, of course, all the right stuff, just in that one box, we have got the environments for teaching and learning, which is a huge issue, about which there's a lot of research and a lot of opinions in practice. We have got student engagement, which is another construct that has a deep research base and a lot to learn. We've got student empowerment, which is different than engagement, and around which there's also a lot that we could learn. And then, we've got critical thinking, ethics, communication skills, collaboration skills, resilient learning, or maybe you might talk about student motivation, and then, success-ready individuals. If you were a teacher, a principal, a paraprofessional in our district, and we showed you that, would it tell you what to do on a Tuesday morning? And of course, it wasn't designed to do that. It's a big, bold, aspirational statement for kids, but it doesn't get down into the level of strategies, tactics, and then, of course, we are living in the age of measurement. How actually are we going to tell that we're making progress toward those goals? So, that is just one, and the Cabinet's been awesome in sharing with me a number of different possibilities, and Board Members, too, that can feed, that exist. So, we have the strategic plan, we have the graduate profile, we have some work that has been done around equity. We, of course, have all of our policies and the equity statements. So, there's all of these different resources, but my early conclusion, three weeks in, is that we don't have that unifying vision, that clear set of priorities, and then the mechanisms whereby we can actually implement those priorities over a sustained period of time. I don't think, I'm guessing I'm surprising any of you with that conclusion, and a lot of work has been done that could feed into what I'm thinking about. So, what might a planning process look like? And I kept this very high level and didn't put a ton of time into it, because you have not made a decision to do this, and I think it's very important that the Board make a decision, and not just because I'm here for a year as interim, because there are many other important things going on this year in the district. We're going to be dealing with COVID, we're going to be dealing with an array of other issues. If we're going to do this, I think there needs to be a serious commitment to do it, and that's the subject of our discussion tonight. But based on my early time here, here's probably how I would structure about a six-month planning process. I think we could do it really well in six months. It will require some capacity, and frankly, in a district of this size, that's a sprint, so that's, that's relatively aggressive. I don't think we need more time, though, because of the groundwork that has been laid in those areas that I was just referring to. I would call sort of a guiding group, and as I'll show here at the bottom, I'm envisioning Board involvement, subject to Board Member time and interest in all of these, so this is a process that I would see as Board involved. The Board owns the strategic plan, in my view, and I'll talk a little bit about how we, how we have the Board own that, and it doesn't get you into the business of tactics. So, I'll give an example of that in a minute. I would call, rather than a steering committee, the coherence committee, because the thing that I think has been happening here in Rochester is, we've had different groups working on different pieces of this puzzle, and we haven't had a coherent strategy across the groups. But the problem is, the whole point of a strategic plan is that it gives us a limited set of clear, compelling goals that we can actually all work toward over time. So, I called it the coherence committee. It's really, it's really a steering committee, but the goal is to create a coherent strategy so that what we're doing in the other areas that I'm going to put on the screen now are collectively coherent, and that when you take them together, they're more than the sum of their parts. So, the first would be a goals and measures group. And again, there's building blocks here in the district's World's Best Workforce Plan, in the, you know, the graduate profile, so, but what are the goals, and how are we going to measure progress? I have already encountered widely varying perspectives on the useful, the appropriate uses of standardized testing in the district, very wide range, in just three weeks. We would grapple with that in this goals and measures group, like, what role does standardized testing play in measuring the progress we have toward success? That doesn't by any means have to be the only measure, but, so, what are the big-picture strategic goals, and how will the Board and the community and the district measure progress to them? So, that would be the first group I'd recommend to grapple with that. The second would be what I'm calling improvement systems. And by this, I mean ways that we can, at the building level, the district level, and more broadly, advance toward those goals. So, one example that I've talked about with a number of you, and it's kind of predictable given my background, we don't have a Director of Research or a Research Office. I would believe that over a three-year period, or however many period the plan would be, that's an appropriate improvement systems goal to, for the district to build out, that we would have that position, and we would define what that person does, providing the community, the schools, the Board with not just data, but analysis. So, that's just an example of what that, and there are many other, many other possibilities in that improvement systems group. But the key idea there would be, what are our mechanisms to improve? There's a small but growing body of research that really finds, actually, educators are quite, of which I consider myself one, quite good at changing. Do a new program, do something. We're not very good at improving, learning from what we tried, what didn't work, rethinking it, but that's really how progress, you know, happens. And so, what are the systems for improvement? So, that would be the second group. Again, these are planning groups that would, through which we'd be doing the work of developing the plan. the plan. The third is what I call the economic engine group. And that's a little bit of a strange terminology, but it really is saying, if we're going to realize our aspirations for kids, we need to have the resources to do it and to do it well. I've also, in my early weeks here, heard a lot of interesting things about enrollment. How many Rochester families are choosing or not choosing to send their kids to Rochester Public Schools? That's one issue that economic engine group might be grappling with. Another is, how do we fund our work? We mostly still allocate FTEs. We allocate positions. There are very radically different ways of funding schools. A weighted student formula, where the school just gets a pot of money based on the number and demographics and needs of their kids. So, the real, the real purpose of that group would be to say, how do we resource the work? And how do we face what, and John is at a conference today, but what he's shared with me is the possibility of some significant financial challenges two or three years out. So, how do we really plan ahead for that? The next would be organizational culture group, and that's intentionally broadly defined, but that's really, how do we create spaces where all of us, starting with students, can be our full selves? Diversity, equity, and inclusion, at least in my early thinking, would run across all of these groups, but that's a place where it really, really lives as a central tenant, starting with the board's policies around equity policy. But it's broader than that. It's about how do we actually create spaces in which we can attract the most capable people to work with kids and keep them engaged and happy? We know that in some, some areas, and Carl's been doing a lot of creative thinking with others, we're having a lot of trouble recruiting people in certain areas. Part of that is, what, how much do we pay people? Super important things. But it's also, how do we make this a place where they really want to work and want to stay? So, there'd be that. And then, the final would be really beyond the district, what I was talking about, a family and community engagement group. How do we really authentically have that kind of family engagement, both at the, the school and the district level? So, those would be the early thinking that I would have about how we might structure the process, and then just two other kind of enabling conditions here. And then, what I'm going to do is, I'm going to ask us to number off and go into some smaller groups to really pull apart this idea and then come back together for some conversation. So, one important potential reason of the why now is that we have some funding remaining from the second wave of federal COVID relief dollars, about $2 million remaining. We have the full third wave, about $17 million. Now, those funds have parameters, but all of them align with meeting the needs of kids at this really pivotal moment. They could potentially be used to jump-start the plan. And so, those are dollars that I think we all know are not going to come again. They have to be used over the next two years, my, so we, there's time-limited period. But it could be an, and because the state of Minnesota, thank you, did a solid work at the legislature, we're pretty stable on the general fund side as well for the next two years. And so, we have a unique opportunity to use those dollars to really launch this long-term strategy of change in a way that I think most school districts would really envy because those are resources that are quite flexible, as long as we're meeting certain, you know, parameters, all of which I think fit. So, that's one sort of potential thing for you to consider. And then, I would, I would recommend, and I think this is something that you as board members particularly may want to talk about, both when we're into some smaller groups, but then also as we come back together as a full group. I do believe that boards should be involved in the development of this kind of plan. I know there's different schools of thought, and we always are, are thinking about governance versus things. Let me give you one brief example, and then I'm going to stop and kind of throw, throw the floor open for any questions of clarification or reaction, then I'm going to, as I said, put us into some smaller groups, and then we'll come back together. Those five areas that I listed notably do not include intentionally the tactics through which the district would achieve all of those goals. So, for instance, selection of a particular curriculum, or of leaders, or of many of the other really critical things that would be required, is not something that I believe goes in the strategic plan. That's in the level below the strategic plan. We're accountable for it, we keep the board updated on it. But it's when you get into that level that you do actually take the board out of setting the strategic vision for the district. And so, you're set, you're choosing the goals, you're involved in choosing the measures, you're involved in thinking about the systems through which we actually achieve those things. But it's not pulling the board into that tactical level of involvement. And that, I think, frees up the board to be very involved, because you should be owning that strategic-level vision, but not those deeper layers of, you know, implementation issues. So, there's never a perfectly bright line between, you know, what is strategy and what is tactic, but that, I mean, sort of the military background is, is the easiest way to think about the differences between those two. I believe boards should be involved in setting strategy, and you can't do that if you don't come to the meetings, if you're not actively involved in it. So, that'd be my, my recommendation. So, what I'm going to ask you to do, and we'll stop here again first just for, you know, reactions or thoughts, but we are a relatively big group, and so what I'm going to, I thought about strategically placing people in smaller groups and things, and what instead I'd like to do is just number off into four. And I'd like to ask us, and so it will be a mix of staff and board members in those groups, and actually, I'm going to kind of float across the groups, number off to four. And your charge in that smaller group is, what would be the pros of undertaking a process like this this year, you know, the benefits? What would be the cons of doing something like this? And then, when we come back together, really, our, our full group conversation will be, you know, one, with this study session as background, and I know the board invites me and the cabinet folks to participate in this discussion, but ultimately, this is your decision as board members. Do you think we should launch a strategic planning process during the, you know, this school year? And if so, what should that process include? What should some of the parameters be? I think it is an entirely, just to be really clear, it is an entirely defensible decision for the board to say, "No, with an interim superintendent, with everything else going on this year, this is not the right year to do it." So, I would not consider that a sort of rejection of something that I think is really critical. I think you should really make the decision as a board if this feels like the right effort. Obviously, we're in a study session, so you can't vote on anything anyway, and so we're just letting, you're thinking about this and the decision, does it need to be made tonight? And, you know, the, the chair could be making some decisions about whether, and if so, we want to revisit this in a board meeting, where any of you could propose that. But, so this is really for consideration and obviously not for action. Thoughts for the good of the full group before we get into those smaller groups and start to really think about pros and cons of launching an effort like this this year?
James. So, this is, this is tied to, 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 to.
As interim superintendent, but it was something that we had as a board planned months back, saying we need to revisit. And so, as for chair, I guess I would ask, does this look like some of the things that you felt we were kind of leaning toward or wanting to potentially consider?
That is such a good question, Don. I didn't know what to expect, honestly. It was going to be, where are we on the strategic plan? Kind of a report out in terms of what it looked like at this point, but I hadn't seen that, that work recently.
And if I may then, so, is it necessary for us to actually consider, well, where are we then? And Dr. Pikel perhaps alluded to, well, it's one thing to have a plan, but without the measurements, you know, do we really know? And there's a lot of hard work, but is it, I wrote this down, right work is different than hard work. So, I guess I, I'm anxious to kind of break into the smaller group to actually get a better feel for, because I don't want Dr. Pikel to necessarily feel that he's been tasked with, but this is really a mission, a concern we had prior to. And whoever would be sitting where you are, I think this was scheduled to her. And, and so, just three of mine, board members, that it's something that we have asked for and, and we definitely need to.
Yeah, and I think you make a good point, too. In small groups, we can get a sense about where we are, but I don't want to speak for you, which I'm about to do. But, you know, Dr. Pikel is a process person, and when we were at, when we were talking about where is the strategic plan, and my answer is, I'm not sure. I think this is a great way for us to get updated about, because people here have done a lot of work. Where are we? And as a group, do we think this is a good idea to commit to working together going forward this year? Is that okay?
It was. I, I think, just to be even blunter, and I, I tried to emphasize that there are a lot of things we can build upon. Were there an existing draft of a strategic plan that I believed I could bring you to react to, that, that laid these things out? I would have. I don't believe that exists. I believe there are building blocks of it, and I think we could get to that point through some type of a process like this. So, I really appreciate the question, because maybe in, in an effort not to seem like I'm casting aspersions on anything that happened before, I may not have been as clear in setting this up. If that existed in a way that I thought was really going to meet the needs of the district, I would have brought that to you. And so, instead, I'm suggesting a forward-looking process that will absolutely integrate the building blocks that are there, but that would be a substantially new process going forward. And I would say, I already said this to the cabinet this morning, they are not only free, but encouraged to disagree with my assessment now or in their small groups or wherever, because, you know, this is not a hard science. It's an issue, but it really is my saying, I think, I think we need a new process that needs to consider some of these things. The long-range facilities work is another example. It's great. It's out there. It's long-range thinking. How does that actually feed into the strategic plan for what the district does in all of its work? And how do we integrate that? Is the, is the vision that I'm thinking about this process might take us to? And yes, the board did absolutely, from the outset of my time here, put this high on my to-do list. And so, this was coming back to the board and saying, "Yeah, I think we need a process going forward here." Without any other questions, can we number off to four? And what, let's try and do, I'm going to kind of, the reason I'm going to float is just kind of to gauge, I'm going to give you a little space to kind of engage the conversation, see where we're going, and then I'll kind of get a sense of how much time we want to have for that, and then we'll come back together again for a discussion of the whole. So, if I can start to my left, if you can just number off in four, and then what we'll do is, you're free as a group to sort of space out somewhere around this room probably, but if you wanted to, you know, go somewhere else, just make sure I know where you are. But I think it'd be good if we can stay in here, because then we can all be, we can all be co-located. So.
One.
Two.
Three.
Four.
Two.
Three.
Four.
One.
Two.
Three.
Four.
Awesome. Thank you so much. So, let's just, for the starting points, let's just say one's over here, two's over there, three's over here, four's over there, to meet, and then you can spread out however you want. And thank you, everybody, for, for rolling up and engaging in this discussion. So, I am, I'm sure lots of us, lots of you in the room have been teachers and facilitators. I am not a fan of, and I'm not going to ask now for a report out, because I find when you do a report out, it becomes, you listen to the whole discussion of one and then the whole discussion of the other. But we want it to be a fluid report out, where we're talking about the various issues, as opposed to, group A summarizes everything they did, and then group B summarizes everything they did, and we don't get through the issues. So, if you'll play along with me, it's the same goal, but a slightly different means, which is to say, we're going to work through the two issues that I really asked you. I shall put that up unless you find this slide helpful to look at. The question, what are the pros and cons and what would the process need to include? That's where we're headed. But first, let's take that sort of just mapping you did of the possibilities, and, and then we'll get to the two questions that are on the screen. So, what did you think of with some of the pros of launching a strategic planning process? Then we'll come to the cons, and then we'll talk about, especially board members, your thoughts about what is, what is advisable at this point? So, who's willing to jump in? I, I hope we can hear from each group without actually needing to summarize everything. What'd you think of on the pros? Yeah, thank you so much.
So, my group is all over the place now, but one of the things the group identified was that this process uses some of your strengths that you've brought along, and maybe maximizes your impact during the interim period by helping us build some capacity around the measurement and research piece. Do you want all our pros or just one of it?
No, why should I highlight if there were some others? I mean, you don't need to be encyclopedic, but ones that you think were pretty important to the group.
All right. We felt it was important for people that, one of the values of bringing the board and the administration together to do this process was to speak the same language and agree on those measures ahead of time so that there's clarity, there's predictability, there's also carry-through with changes in personnel, whether that is a new board member, a new soup, a new administrator. So, we talked about that, that we saw some positivity there.
That's great. Thank you. And if, if another group mentions, when I say I don't do report outs, what I mean is, I don't ask you to summarize, I wasn't very clear. Don't summarize all your feedback in one report out, like we'll do pros and cons and then advise, so, to state that a little more clearly. If you want to just reference something that another group said, that's also great. And you could say that was ours as well. Another group with the pros that, that you talked about, who's willing to share? I didn't, I didn't appoint a reporter, but I thought, I noticed most of you self-initiated, so thank you for that.
I can.
Please do. Love it.
Oh, God, Kathy.
Our group talked about how important the coherence committee role was, that it's something that all of the building blocks of the current strategic planning process probably needed, and that will be key to the success of bringing those building block, integrating those building blocks, and then finding what else we need. So, they were, there was a lot of excitement about the coherence committee. And another one we talked about was, we're going to have to engage the community on this federal money as part of the requirements. And clearly, our parents have been involved in their children's education more directly than they ever have been, because it was in their living rooms. So, it provides us an opportunity to educate them about what the district wants to do and also to get that feedback from their experience. And since we have to do it anyway for the federal money, why not make it part of a bigger planning process for the future?
Yeah, thank you. I didn't say much, but for those of you who don't know, there is a required needs assessment that we have to do regardless of whether we tie it to a strategic plan or not, tied to the federal dollars. And so, we would be essentially enhancing that, I think, with a longer-term emphasis. Any other pros or does that hit the main ones from your group?
Agreed about having the board involved, that that was really key. And, and it's beyond the strategic plan. It will help with planning our, our board agendas and focusing our board agendas and making our board meetings more effective, because we'll, we'll be focusing on items related, our agenda items can be related to the strategic plan, and that helps us to decide what things we really have to have conversations about and what things might be more appropriate for a consent agenda or, you know, moving through the business There was a pro of a communication. This really helps to drive strategic communication for the district, too. Common messages. And bringing some focus to the equity work. There's so much out there that we could do, and I know that you all learned a lot from the Midwest and Plains Equity Center about what the menu is, but what's right for Rochester, and this might help us focus that.
That's great. Thank you so much. A third group on the pros that you saw in your discussion. Yeah, thank you so much.
We had three board members in our group.
Yeah, I saw that. But you had an intrepid cabinet member that was.
Jackie.
Speaking for us all.
So, I was looking at my list and hearing everybody else and thinking, I don't have as much education speakers, as I should in the list, but I'll go through. But it did point out that one of the pros for us was satisfying the board responsibility by going through the strategic planning process. We viewed it as something that would give us a clearer process and formalize that process. That was a pro for us. And then, Jackie added the fact that doing work like this provides multidisciplinary people to work across teams that they wouldn't necessarily normally work with. We also had a very interesting discussion about the concept of a joint effort, whether that's a pro or a con. We put it on both lists. It both fosters joint effort and it requires joint effort. So, two ways to look at it.
That's great. Thank you. And how about our fourth group? Pros that were there?
Well, a little rough and should probably be, because he came up with the idea that when we have a strategic plan, that provides for the community our picture of excellence. Julie had the analogy of a cross, not a cross. Julie had the analogy of a crossword puzzle.
Jigsaw puzzle.
When you just said jigsaw puzzle, but picture of excellence. And I think that if we could present to the community a very simple to understand, very clear picture of what our focus is for the next two, three, five years, whatever, now's the time to do it. And we have, I think, there's been a lot of good work, but I think the picture isn't clear. So we could provide that. We talked a little bit about the cradle to career, for instance. You know, kids ready for kindergarten, and increase the graduation rate, ready for work and school. Easy to understand. And then all the pieces fall in that from your picture of excellence. Well, that was good.
I can't take full credit.
Well.
I won't.
Just go ahead.
No, because that's not me. But there was a lady in an interview process recently, and she posed that question to the staff there. It just made me really be reflective because if we don't have that clear picture, then it doesn't matter how we're putting that puzzle together, it will never look correct. Right? So we have to be clear on what we're doing so that we can communicate that out to everyone else. And then we show that unified front, right, from the school bar to the cabinet, to all of our other staff members, we're all speaking the same language. And it has to be simple enough that the community at large can understand it, and then even explain it to their kids when they're at home having their conversations. This is the reason that we're going in this direction. So we all have to have that picture before we can move forward.
One of the things that, in my, thank you for, in my walking around the room and chatting a little bit with folks who weren't in the groups, I realized I might have even given a few more examples of what, in my view, at least a really good strategic plan, the kind of level of detail. And I didn't do that because I don't want to seem to presuppose what our plan would say. But just to play out briefly the example that you just gave about, like, high school graduation. We're the board to say with community input and analysis that that's one of our big goals, and we have a way to measure, which generally today, there is consensus on how you measure high school graduation rate, which used to be super controversial, and it's never perfect, but let's say it's there. In many districts, and I don't know about Rochester, the place that the school leaving, I try not to say dropout, I also don't quite say pushout, but the school leaving begins and happens for a lot of kids is ninth grade. And when you look at the data in course failures, attendance, and discipline, you can predict in ninth grade with striking accuracy, school leaving. A really good strategic plan initiative could be, we are going to have a major initiative with our ninth graders to keep them on track to high school graduation through X, Y, you know, relationships, curriculum innovation, mentoring, and whatever. That's the level of the plan. So then the board can be saying, how's the ninth grade on-track work going? Because you've identified that ninth grade is a key point in our attainment of high school graduation. And so suddenly, we have an ongoing dialogue about what's happening with our ninth graders, because we've identified that as a critical priority. Now, do we care about 10th graders, 11th graders, 12th graders? Of course. But we've said, ninth grade is a place where a lot of kids form their perception of themselves, fragile students, form themselves, their perception of themselves as a high school student, is this for me. And so, you know, that would be the kind of thing. And then there would be data analysis in all the planning groups, but I think especially in that goals and measures group, we were thinking about, to what extent in Rochester have we dug into the data, found it useful, and then actually developed plans to act upon it? So I know I'm asking you kind of to lean into a process that we would co-create, but, you know, I would have the key responsibility for working with you to conceptualize it and move it forward. But, so let's talk a bit about your cons that you saw in one of the groups, and then we'll really throw it open for those other two questions. Can we just go in the same order? Thank you.
We had four that I would highlight. We weren't sure where student voice fits in this process.
Great point.
So we thought it was not necessarily a con, but a need of the plan. These are all probably needs of the plan. One is that we feel the need to connect our strategic work with the other major arms of government across our region, and wondering if there's a way to work that into this planning process, or a side next to the planning process, but that it needs to be connected with other systems that affect our families. And then this idea that things come up, and when you're planning, you don't necessarily know what's coming. So building some sort of adaptation and change process into the plan, including acceleration strategies. So identifying, if we just had $2 million, or if we had these three positions, we could do this in six months instead of two years, having those written in so that when someone does come to us, or we get a grant application, we know exactly where we would put something like that while we're planning. And then I would just throw in the Eisenhower, was it Eisenhower quote that you had up there? When I first got here eight years ago, that 2013 process had just finished with the big community input and all this. And it was a 40-page plan, and the problem was the people who had let that process work on. So I would just throw in at the end here that let's not put all our effort into a 40-page plan that relies on the people being here to implement it, if you will.
Yeah, started with me, because by definition, my job situation. So totally. And we'd have to design for that.
Right. Keeping it simple and easy for someone to pick up and carry on.
Yep. Thank you. Second group, cons.
This came up a few times. I think the best way someone put it up was the breakneck pace of the past few years. We moved from a referendum in 2019 to COVID in 2020 to leadership changes and continued COVID in 2021. And is everybody ready to take this on in the next six months? However, we did have a positive perspective, the sense that people are ready to get back to positive work in the fall. So something to watch out for, but not necessarily doom and gloom. And then it's not necessarily a con, but what's missing is who, the student voice, making sure that all the different, not just communities are represented, but all the communities of staff that are in that 2013 process. One of the most impactful participants in one of my groups was someone from the maintenance group, because he brought a perspective that had never really been brought to a strategic planning process before. So that's really important to figure that out. And that's time-consuming and that kind of outreach. And then, not a con, but sort of where it fits, if it fits in one place or it fits in multiple places, but the focus on social emotional learning, it's been such an emphasis in the district and necessary going forward. And that still has to happen while we're planning. So how does that fit with a plan for the future versus the work we still have to do? The minutia, that's just part of the minutia of running the district while we're planning for the future. So how does that balance?
Thank you. Next group on the cons.
Our group was next, but Karen gave me her not.
Otis, that strategic move.
The obvious cons of it requires time and energy. The concern, whether it's real or perceived, that we could be wasting prior efforts and being redundant, that it may require a point person who doesn't have room in his or her title, and how to coordinate who's not busy.
Yep.
Right, right now. And as Karen pointed out, it fosters joint effort, but it requires joint effort. So.
Yeah. I think if we did this, and we talked about this, I think an appropriate use of some of that federal money would be to add a position that doesn't exist to coordinate this for us. And so it's something I actually asked, do a little bit of thinking about that, because I agree with you, you know. You couldn't do this well with everybody doing it on the fly. So, yep, thank you. And final group on the cons side. It was you again. Are you going to look at Will, and you guys are in battle?
We didn't exactly talk about that.
Okay.
Because Julie got us on the track.
Yeah, blame me.
Yeah, I just did.
That's okay. Civil disobedience.
I think it was just the one thing that we talked about was that idea of all the work that's been put in, and not dismissing that work, and making all of that energy not be appreciated, or the feeling that, ooh, we put in all this time, and now we're kind of starting to respect that.
The other thing, I don't know if this is a pro or a con, or something in between, or totally irrelevant, but it's like we had the left hand and the right hand, and nobody knew what the other hand was doing. You know, I mean, Carla was very surprised that the board didn't know what they were doing. We didn't know what you guys were doing. All we had was what's on the sheet. You know, and so some of those bridges have to be built so that we can see the work and where you guys were going with it before we can really make a decision about what do we keep, what don't we keep, what can we build on. Just from what Carla said, I think there's tremendous potential from what you guys did, cabinet members have already done, you know. But for the board, I should say, speak for myself, is, you know, this is all new to us. You know, you've been working with these ideas for a couple of years now, and it's like, oh, gosh, this is really nice to know. So I really appreciated what you did in the beginning of doing some relationship building. And I think if we keep doing that relationship building within the context of the work, that we have a huge potential to get a lot done.
May I jump in on that? I don't want anyone to feel, because I agree with what Julie said, that as a board member, I don't always feel like I know what you guys are doing. And I don't want to put that on anyone else not feeling like they've reported it.
It's not your fault.
Just like students, sometimes adults need things repeated before it really sinks in, and I'm definitely one of those people. The first time I hear it, I kind of get an overview, and the second time, I can kind of start processing the details, and the third time, maybe, or fourth, or fifth, or sixth, I feel like I can almost report back what I heard. So please don't anyone take that as criticism. But also, you know, our year of board meetings goes very, very quickly. It's like, before we know it, we've just finished a year, and we've maybe only heard things once because we have so much other business. So I don't want anyone to feel like they haven't done their job in reporting out. It's more on, speaking for myself, I maybe need to hear it more than once. Or in different ways sometimes, just like students, the first time I hear it, it might not make a ton of sense, but if you give me examples of what you're doing that to me, and probably to the community, probably to the listeners at home, hearing it multiple times in multiple ways with examples and stories. My favorite parts of board meetings are a peek inside what's happening in our buildings.
I appreciate it. And just to reaffirm that last point, at least if this happens, absolutely the existing work would be a starting point for the process. It wouldn't, but my clear recommendation is we need a process. If this is the right year for the process is the question. And so that's, but we would not, like, whatever, throw the baby out with the bathwater, whatever the metaphor really is supposed to be. We would take the work that's been done, would have a new process that would be, as I said at the outset, I think, in response to Don's question. Were I of the opinion that I, that there was a coherent plan to bring you that connected the dots, I would have done that. I don't think that exists, and so my recommendation is a process. And then a question of timing. So thank you for digging in on those small groups. It was fun to get a sense that you were engaged in those conversations. Turning now to what I have on that concluding conversation, and of course, cabinet colleagues are emphatically, I know, welcome to join in the thoughts about these two issues, but really, it really is a question for the board in a lot of ways. And so for you, just to have a bit of time, there doesn't need to be resolution tonight, so we don't need to belabor these points. But where are you? What do you think? We already got some great ideas, and I usually take notes a lot, but when I'm directly facilitating, I didn't, but I saw some other folks. We got some great if-so-what-should-the-process-includes, like youth voice was a great, was a great point. So there are some that we've already gotten. Where are you on this notion of the merits of it in your early, your early thinking about undertaking a process like this? Understanding that the schematic I gave you on the board was just an initial suggestion, the six-month timeline is an initial suggestion, we would bring back a proposal with greater specificity and more input, if it's something you want to consider. And if it's not, we got a lot of other stuff to do, and we can more than fill the year constructively without undertaking this effort. So I'll open the floor for board members to share thoughts on that.
I can go first. I think as like a newbie board member, to me, one of the things that we discussed is to have something like this that outlasts all of us would be helpful for newer board members to feel safe and grounded when they start on the board, because I feel like I do not have my sea legs. Like, I don't know, what are we doing? I have not even met all of the individual cabinet members. I didn't get to meet the last superintendent. There was just like constant movement. And I feel like if we sit down and really think about what is this planning process, and if, yes, of course, we should be a part of it, so that there's that stability in not just what is our vision, the, you know, the kind of the jigsaw puzzle, or the, you know, picture that we're sort of trying to piece together, but where are we going to be next year, and 15, and 20, and, you know, 30 years from now, or where would we like it to be? Then if that is a living thing, and it has life that we've given it, then it, we as the people are just plug and play. But the district is going to continue to grow whether we're here or not. So that would be helpful to me. So yes, I'm in favor of, you know, the strategic planning process. And as my legislative committee members, people know, like, I need a, we need a thing. I need something specific, and I need it to be measurable, and we need to, like, move forward. That's just my anxiety as a leader. And what do I need, or what does this need, the process needs to include? I think there were a lot of things that we already touched on, that I, you know, support those, certainly student voice, what community engagement would look like, how do we weave ourselves with other entities in Rochester and in our county? Because this isn't, we kind of mentioned that, you know, leaning off the community school model, we realized from COVID that we are like a community district. Like, we provide all the things, and we just, we need to acknowledge the fact that we do that and actually move to that model, if that's what we're doing. And so we, but we need our partners to help us because we don't have flexibility in funding or resources the way some of those other things do. And so I feel like we need to have all of those visions and understandings as we're moving these goals forward, for sure. And I think that, you know, because a lot of what we started to say that our cons were, were like, well, he's only going to be here for a year, some of the other board members may only be here for two more years, you know, the cabinet members, who knows what's going on. But I think if we set goals beyond who we are, and we think of the children, somebody who's not yet even in kindergarten, and how they're, we're going to get them through graduation, that is what we need in this process.
Thank you.
I'll go next, unless you would like to. Number one is easy, I'm all in. Number two, I think everybody else will have a lot of good perspectives on what the process needs to include. But the first thing that jumps to my mind is a clear timeline and process, preferably on the shorter side than the longer side. Even if this is like an introductory chapter to a next step, I think it's better to get through a limited, getting on the same page process, and then maybe starting something with a longer arc, but with finishing the shorter arc first, right? So like you said, this has a potential to last long past that any of us are here, but that doesn't mean we don't need to finish and get it started. The process can be a long arc, but whatever we start with needs to have a beginning and within the time that we're all still here.
The needs assessment needs to be done by October. So that's for the federal money? So that's one thing that would be built into our larger plan. And of course, we'd be sharing that with you. If we're tying it to a new strategic plan, it's more than $17 million. It's the future of the system. But so that has a timeline on it that is already there.
It's already established for us.
Yeah, that'd be a piece of it. And then, of course, the needs assessment leads to priority setting, leads to feedback loops, and so we.
Kent, is it early October, end of October? That might make a difference.
That's a great question.
October what?
Ah-ha.
It's kind of like September.
It's kind of like September.
Yeah. It's a needs assessment with like a small N and a small A. I mean, it's not like as deep as I think we are all committed to go, but it's going to be a sprint to, you know, they don't give a ton of guidance, but there's some parameters to it. So, yeah, that has to happen. Were you going to jump in?
I guess, you know, we talked about, or around at least, is a strategic plan a map of everything this district is doing, why it's important, how it gets measured? Or is it a shorter-term thing, like for the next three to five years, or 10 years, or whatever? These are going to be our priorities. We're going to keep doing all kinds of stuff, but this district puts these things as the most important priorities for the number of years. And one of the things that we talked about in our group is that the current universal goals, which are well-written and wonderful, but I find them confusing partly because both student achievement and accountability, almost all of their language comes from the graduate profile. They're sort of the same thing, different terms at the top, but for me at least, they're pretty much about, are we teaching kids to be, helping kids, empowering kids to become these kinds of people, these kinds of learners? And then we've got access and equity separate. And I'm thinking for any goal we have, any priority we have, access and equity should be part of that, not separate. And for me, it's just, it's difficult saying, well, this goes under this one, and this goes under this one. I wonder if we need to kind of, for a strategic plan, maybe the first step in the process is to determine what are our priorities going forward? Not what's everything we're going to do, but what are the things we really want to focus on, talk about, present to the community, and somebody said this, in a way that is really easy to understand.
I would just interject that certainly in my view, the strategic plan is the second thing that you just described, not the first. It's not, it's not the asset map of everything you're doing. That's actually very valuable to do as well, but it's the change priorities that are there. And obviously, the last organization I worked for is much smaller and less complex than Rochester Public Schools. But we got, at Search Institute, in our current five-year strategic plan, three critical priorities: strengthening youth adult, studying and strengthening youth adult relationships, studying and strengthening peer-to-peer relationships, and studying and strengthening relationship-rich organizations. And everybody in the organization knows, and we had a shorthand, that's a youth adult, that's a peer-to-peer. That's, we call it RRO, is like relationship-rich organizations. So we even had acronyms, just, but everybody is really clear on those three. And when we wrote grants, we did projects, you know, we were like, we're not attentive enough to the peer-to-peer relationships in this project, because we had that. And it took, it sounds obvious, but it took us a long time to get to that level of clarity. When we started, there were like 18 goals and all these things. But we really worked to get it to where we could all remember, okay, those are the three. Now, we're not going to get it to three little things in a $350 million complex school system, but to get it to where people, and yeah, the ways we build on the current strategic goals and the strategic plan will be something, if we do this, to really give real thought to, because they're really important aspirational statements. The other thing, too, that I didn't say a lot, I think the mission, vision, core belief stuff doesn't need to be touched at all. Like, that we should build on, and we should integrate. So that's really solid, and it's there. It's really, what you were just describing, what was the term? The thing. I need a thing. Like, we need the thing.
I need a thing.
We need the thing.
Tell me what to do.
Right. Other board member comments, and certainly also, I'll open a space for other cabinet folks, but.
Well, I'll go. My answer to number one is easy, too. Yes. And number two, and I think we've said it, and it's part of the goals, but the process needs to be driven by the data that shows what's happening currently on the ground to our students and our staff and our families. I think it was Lyndon Johnson that said, all politics is local, and I think all education is local, hyper, hyper-local. And I think it helps our community to see that information, right, to understand that we're coming from a very clear understanding of our successes and our failures right now, in the present time. And we're building the plan on that.
It's really, you point about also not just focusing on the challenges, but also the successes. What are the strengths of our P S that we want to build on? It's so important to be intentional about, because you can rush right past that and just go to the gaps. And the gaps is really critical, but what are the areas of strength where we really want to actually spread it further, or invest more deeply? That's really key.
Well, for me, I fully support the launch, if you will. And then also for two, I'd like to see the issue of justice incorporated into it. And for me, the term justice would suggest that the inequalities which exist are addressed, and the supports are no longer needed. Thus, we achieve justice. So as a strategic plan, I think that can be something that we shoot for, aspire to attain, and the picture that the community is aware of, and say, yeah, that makes sense to me. You know, we've received a number of letters of support this past week from members of diverse part of the community, you know, voicing support and saying, we believe, and we're supportive of. And I think if we give them the picture, and they hear the symphony, Julie, they'll be pleased to be a part of and support whatever we may offer and need in the future.
And just building on that, one of the most wonderful things before an orchestra begins is the cacophony that happens when people are tuning, or they're practicing a passage. And somebody who's maybe not so familiar with that is thinking, what in the heck is going on? And then there's silence, and then it all happens. So I think we have to be comfortable with some cacophony that's going to be happening, but understanding that those individual pieces that make that cacophony, you've got the second clarinet player over here doing this, and somebody else doing that, is, it's not, it's not a negative thing. It's a positive thing. And those kinds of things have to happen as well. So I'm very much in favor of doing this. I would really like to see our board work become more centered on student achievement. So that, and if we're going to do that, we have to say, how does this, how does this strategic plan support this, or how does it relate to the strategic plan? And I think that's going to give, certainly me as a board member, a whole lot more focus. And somebody else mentioned earlier about some things that could just end up in the consent agenda as a regular thing, without maybe having quite so many detailed reports, which I appreciate. But if we have those in advance, we can go through them and say, okay, do I have questions about this? Get them answered. We can always pull something off the consent agenda to discuss. So that's kind of where my vision would be for some of this.
I'm also an easy yes. And my thought, in listening to what everybody's talking about, is that I think this will help our board also with our committees, and what our committee's goals are, and what we plan to accomplish. But also, I'm still looking at outcomes, for some reason, tonight. And one of the outcomes I see of something like this, being focused and clear, is if we do need to seek a referendum, this would be a very good tool to encourage our community to support it.
Even building on that, and in, at least, again, this was, the five areas I mapped out are based on the number of times I've done this, so that it came from somewhere. But thinking about the referendum would be potentially a key, each of these groups would have a charter, and they would have key issues, and all of which you would look at, and say, yeah, that's it, they should think about this, like your point about justice, like, where does that belong? So we set that up, and the referendum is another great thing to look at in the context of the economic engine. So we're not just thinking about the referendum as, well, do we need a referendum? We're actually saying, as part of the larger business model, which is not a term we use very much in education, but, you know, we do have one. We get this much money from the state with these kids tied in. We could be thinking more long-range about that referendum issue than we might otherwise in a larger context. So something that, we wouldn't be making the decision there, but we'd be saying, if we did it, what would we need it for? What would be, you know, when would it be valuable? So just building on the potential value of something like that. Other observations, including just broadening the thoughts, folks in the cabinet, that are, things are streaming through your head, Michelle, on this other issue?
This is the first time since I've been back in this district that I've seen more smiles. I mean, you know, we went through COVID, right? So a lot of it has been virtual attendance. But it's difficult to change leadership in a district. And I think that this was done as much as possible with dignity and respect, and I value Mr. Munoz, and the way that he exited this particular district, and the way that you came in respectfully as well. So I'm just really pleased to see everyone, to see the smiles, and to have us interact with each other in a very positive manner for the benefit of our community's children.
Thank you.
And if I can add to what Ms. Peterson just said, and I love the way you lead a room, Ms. Peterson, I think it's a good exercise for team building. And with new leadership, I think intention needs to be given to that effort in congealing. Anytime any one person leaves, it can lead to that need, but I think even more so now. So I appreciate the facilitation that you've provided. And I think that's what leads to some of my smile, is the ability to connect with people and start to establish those sense of teamwork.
Although Scott Sheridan was talking too much in our small.
Why? Well, I think, Madam Chair, I can turn facilitation back to you. We can connect on the degree to which the board would choose to take any more formal action on the strategic plan issue, and can talk about whether and if so, how to do that. I feel like at least I've gotten a lot of really good feedback and some broad direction, and so want to thank you all for that. Sometimes you do spend time really just on process, but it's the go-slow-to-go-fast idea, that we really get very clear about this process, so that we can then, you know, start the sprint to take advantage of, as I think Will was saying at the beginning of our meeting, this extraordinary moment that we have to make this a moment when we all feel a part, that we're a part of something larger than ourselves, and that we just have to have a process for the cacophony, to the symphony. So, thank you.
Julie, you're going to have to play that for us now.
Yeah.
Like, make a recording for us, so we know what you're talking about. I know what you're talking about.
It would take all of us.
Thank you. I'd be happy to facilitate this part of the meeting. We are adjourned at 6:58 PM.
All right.